That one up. Who sent the email, Norma? Was it you or Val?
Val.
Dude, I've been getting so many emails, it's like crazy.
Okay, just for the record, we've been recording.
Don't worry, that's okay. This is a workshop, so it's very informal, so don't worry. But basically, da, 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 da. Alright, here we go. So, uh, this workshop, it is basically seven oh two. We're basically looking to discuss updating annual leave and sick leave, changing designations on what it's called. Um, and basically looking to change it all to a PTO as paid time off. So basically, let's go ahead and see, as you guys know on your packet, we included some of the, uh, information that is found in your policy book. But what I'm gonna go ahead and do is to kick things off, I'm gonna pass it over to Cindy, who handles RHR with GONHHR, and I'm gonna let her do a presentation that she put together for you. Um, that's gonna kind of, uh, lead up into, uh, the discussions about the, uh, annual sick leave and vacation. Ms. Ramirez.
Good afternoon, council members, Mr. Henry, everyone else, Chief, Ever. It's supposed to be a little informal, right? Sorry. Anyway, so, um, I know this has been a conversation that's been an ongoing thing for quite a bit of years. Um, however, it's back on the table again. Uh, Mayor had requested to kind of look at the pros and cons of maybe considering transferring over the annual leave, sick leave into a PTO plan. So my presentation is gonna, it's a very short presentation. Um, one of the disclaimers that I do need to put right now is I'm awaiting, um, I was able to speak to a couple of HR, individuals for Van Horn and for the Village of Intan. Um, some of the other entities weren't as accessible, they're not really as readily available to send information out. Um, Van Horn did send me her stuff today, but she forgot to attach it. So I'm hoping that by tomorrow I can have more, something that I can share with the male, and he can disperse out to you all. Um, so the presentation is really just a short thing of, of, it's a five-slide presentation that gets to the nitty-gritty of what Mayor is trying to do. So for definition purposes, your, um, Norma, do you wanna share it una vez?
Yeah.
Please. So you currently have what you consider verbiage-wise annual leave and sick leave, okay? Uh, PTO is known as personal time off or paid time off, okay? What it is, is basically a, um, as soon as done that on, I can only...
Can y'all see the presentation?
Yeah, will you put it in presentation mode on the lower right-hand corner? It has what looks like a little projector stand, there you go. And then you can go on to the next slide.
Okay.
Please. Thank you. So, PTO pros, okay? Um, you're gonna combine everything into one single bank. So what you currently, what your current employees recognize as annual leave, vacation, sick, which are right now classified into two separate things, your annual leave and your sick leave, both, your annual leave right now does not roll over, it doesn't get paid out. However, it does reset itself upon anniversary date, okay? Your sick leave, um, which we'll go ahead and touch base here in a sec, um, it does accumulate every pay period, okay? So these are some of the benefits, um, it holds an employee accountable. It makes them think twice about the reasons why they're gonna be absent from work. We don't have to police that. Right now, if someone is gonna be out because it's a sick leave or a medical leave, we have to be policing and having to run after them, making sure that they provide a doctor's note to validate and justify that current absence, so that they can utilize their sick leave, okay? In a PTO bank, the employee has complete 100% discretion in how they apply that. If they wanna go get their nails done, they wanna go with their husband out to lunch. If they wanna take a whole week off, you know, to go to Disneyland, that is completely 100% on the employee. Okay, 100% accountability on how they manage, how they utilize, how they handle their balances, and how they handle that particular bank on absences. Um, you know, it eliminates the reasons for employees having to lie, um, I guess, for this lack of a better term, um, lie about why they're being absent, okay? Um, they're not having to scrounge around and looking for reasons as to where, where, where can I go get a, an excuse from a doctor so that they'll validate this particular pay, you know? And obviously, it eliminates the abuse of sick leave, okay? Um, you obviously, you as the town gain some control over those unscheduled about, um, absences. Because now, obviously, there's already a system in place where they have to request those absences with prior notice in order to validate and justify that. Um, in this case, they would still have to abide by that policy already set in place. One of the biggest benefits to the PTO is it's based on tenure, so you can calculate to the T the expected amount of expenditure for that entire leave for each department, okay? Please keep in mind that your sick leave is usually going to be unscheduled, okay? And unless you're budgeting for 240 hours per employee, which would be your 37, 38, 36 employees in your budget, it, you know, that's an expense that you're making that wasn't technically fully accounted for in your budget, okay? Whereas PTO, you know exactly if someone's been with you for five years, you know, they're gonna get X amount of days, then you multiply that by their hourly rate and incorporate all of the, you know, their fringe benefits and all that. You can put that in budget and know that you will have enough money to cover these individuals' leave, and it's not gonna bring you under, okay? You know exactly how to account for that. The next slide, Norma, please? Do we have any questions so far? No?
Cindy, I have one.
Okay, so what?
How, hold on Cindy, how about the, uh, how much, uh, PTO are they gonna be able to accrue, like, let me give you an example, say that they have surgery, and it's gonna take six weeks to recover. Are they gonna be able to save up enough, uh, time to, for that kind of surgery?
You know what I would say, Cindy, what I would recommend is let's leave the questions for after the presentation, 'cause we've got, uh, plenty of information to provide for you, but also some things that we wanna point out when we come across those discussion items, because we kind of already know, uh, what we're expecting.
I apologize, my son is in the background, um, 'cause he likes to act like a 13-year-old, okay? So forgive me. Did I embarrass him enough? I did, right? Good job, Cindy. Okay. Good job, Mom. Okay, so, so Mr. Joe, we'll go back to that, that's a really good question. Um, and I understand Mayor's concern, 'cause it kind of comes to fruition at the end, okay? It, it'll all make sense. So what you currently have in front of you is the annual leave plan that is inside the employee handbook, which is also a part of what the, um, what Ms. Valerie and Norma sent you all, okay? The annual leave plan right now is based on continuous service, which is years of tenure, and it gives the number of days that that employee has access to as far as the annual leave, okay? The good thing about the consideration of transferring or transitioning from what we have now as annual leave to PTO is that there's not gonna be, no one is losing any time. We're not gonna, it's already set to meet that anniversary date. So the only thing that we would really need to do, or the town would need to do, would be making some modifications in the verbiage currently included in the handbook, okay? So if you notice right now, if, once an employee completes one year of continuous service, okay, on their 365th day, they get 12 days, okay? 12 days that they can use as long as they abide by the request leave policy that the Town of Anthony has listed in their employee handbook, okay?
Generous.
Right. So, 1 to 5, 12, 6 to 14, 15, 15 to 24, 20 days, and then 25 or more years, you have 24 days, okay? This is a very splendid, very splendid PTO plan, or annual leave plan, okay? On top of this, you have your sick leave, okay? Go ahead and move over to your next slide, Norma. So the annual leave here, remember, is already based on the anniversary date, consecutive 12 years, okay? And it starts on their promotion date. Should someone get promoted, it's a year from that promotion date, because sometimes it'll change, okay, depending. You can move forward, 'cause I gotta head of myself. Ta-da. Okay, this is the sick leave you guys currently have, um, the town has reflected on the employee handbook. Sick leave accrues continuously, okay? So a first-year employee has an opportunity to acquire or accrue 12 days, which is equivalent to 3.7 hours per pay period, okay? To better understand that, the town is on a 26 pay period cycle. So every pay period, an employee accrues 3.7 hours regardless of whether or not they've used any of that. However, there is a cap. Keep in mind that the Police Department is on a CBA, so they will be different. Um, their accrual cap is at 480 if I'm not mistaken, okay? But they're completely separate, right? It's a collective bargaining agreement that is separate from what we're doing here with your hourly employees on the admin side. Um, if I use a week's worth of sick leave, I still have that opportunity every pay period to make up that time. So it's never-ending, okay? It'll never exceed the 240, and I'll always have access to it as long as I maintain my employment continuously, okay? But again, keep in mind that the Mayor has set certain standards with the sick leave. In order for an employee to access that sick leave, the employee themselves has to be sick. It has to apply to them as employees, this isn't for their daughter and their perrito and the aunt, okay? It has to be themselves. Um, they can use that as long as they bring some sort of medical document justifying that they were sick, okay? So this is a part that we, um, you know, the policing part, right? Sorry, Chief, I don't mean to offend, but that's what we call it, you know, we're just on it, you know? 'Cause we have to validate that, okay? Because if not, it becomes very easy for employees to wanna utilize the sick leave in lieu of vacation, because what ends up happening is, I'll use my couple days of sick leave, right? Because I'm not feeling well, I have a headache, but I'm just gonna use my sick, but I still wanna save my seven days for the Bahama cruise, or my 12 days for my Bahama cruise in the summer, 'cause I wanna go to Cancun or the South Padre Islands or whatever, okay? Now, the other thing is, is, you know, and our employees, you know, should employees have perks? Yes, they should. It's, it's an incentive, it's something that they need to look forward to. But be careful too, that you're not setting an expectation that is also something that you can't conceive. I can guarantee you that the chief, if he's here 24 years or whatever and has 25 days, it's gonna be very illogical for the chief to wanna be out of work for a month, especially in, in a department like him because of his responsibilities now. Is it, you know, something that we would like to do? Yeah, and maybe at some point he may be able to. But it's very unlikely that Norma, people on salary are gonna take up that amount of time, all the time because of the amount of work, it's unrealistic at times, okay? So keep that in mind. The sick leave does roll over, it does not end on anniversary date. So if they end their anniversary year with 240 hours of sick leave, that continues to roll over to the following year, it doesn't reset itself to zero. And it keeps accumulating, that's, that's what happens with the sick leave policy that the town currently has, okay? Um, but do know that it doesn't get paid out, um, at, should they be voluntary or involuntarily separated. Neither does the annual leave currently right now in place, okay? Again, there's an exception, I believe, for the Police Department, just so you all, so I throw it out there. Um, just so you have it at the forefront of your mind. But if, um, if Esteban were to wanna leave today, you know, he resigns or leaves, what have you, that time is not paid out to him, okay? Um, next slide, Norma. This is the proposed PTO plan. Um, if you notice, there has been a one-day increment as per the Mayor's request. So with the new proposed PTO plan, a person that has been employed for a year to five years would be, would have access to 13 days in that anniversary year. So if the employee was hired on January the first, from January the first to December the 31st of that same employee's anniversary year, they would have access to 13 days to do whatever they want with it. We're not gonna be asking for medical notes, we're not gonna be asking for, you know, receipts, nothing like that. It's their days, as long, the only thing we'll ask, obviously, is that they follow the policy requesting that time off. Okay, they can use it, if they, if they decide to use their 13 days in the first three months of the year, that is their, it's their accountability, it's their responsibility to, to, to keep that at the forefront, you know? That's their choice, they've chosen to do that with their time, and they have complete entitlement to that, if that's the word you wanna use. Um, but they have to know that the rest of the nine months of the year, should they not report to work and they're an hourly employee, they would not get compensated for hours not worked. Okay, so again, this is the proposed PTO plan, which has an additional day or eight hours, one day, because we use day increments, um, according to their continuous service, which is identical to what we have right now in annual leave, however, with the day increase.
And then one of the things that we were looking at, and I didn't have an opportunity to follow up with Cindy, but you know, on the 1 to 5 years, one of the things that we were looking at and discussing is that it is very generous, um, for a small municipality like ours, for a one-year employee to be able to receive already 12 days of, uh, paid time off. So what we were looking at is doing the one-day increase for the ones in 1 through cer, uh, 1 through 5 years of service, and then from up, you know, 6 to 14 years based on tenure, just adding instead of the one day to two days. Um, but if you guys would see that, instead of the 16, it'd be 17, 21, 22, 25 would be 26. Um, so that's what we were looking at presenting, but keep in mind, um, I'm gonna go ahead and let Cindy continue. That way we can, you know, show you some of the other things, because at the end of this presentation also, I actually wanna point out, and I have the, uh, we couldn't put it, you know, because it has, uh, personal information on it, and we can't show that to the public or in open forum. But I do have a total amount of what we pay out in sick leave, and some of the differences of once we started getting a little bit stricter and implementing that one-day doctor's notice. So, uh, go ahead, Ms. Ramirez, the floor is all yours.
Okay, so again, you know, one of the cons is always gonna be that when change, you know, nobody likes change, right? Um, but again, it, it's something that, that you'll all have to decide as what's in the best interest of the town, okay? Keep in mind that there's gonna be minimal transition, okay? The current leave policy will stay as it already is, it's set on an anniversary date. Um, you know, the annual leave still resets as they use it or lose it. The employee has to use it, if they don't use it, they lose it, uh, based again on their anniversary. And really, truly, the only modification we would need to make, should council decide to adopt or implement this PTO policy, would be the removal of the sick leave verbiage from the employee handbook, and then of course, making the adjustments on the current, um, continuous employment table that is reflected, which would now include the one-day increase for 1 to 5, and the two-day increase for anyone thereafter. Okay, and again, just to reiterate, this is much easier to manage. Um, it's, it gives the employee the, the discretion 100% to utilize that time as they see fit, without having to bring anybody any notice of any kind. Um, it brings accountability, and obviously, at the end of the day, you know, council's responsibility is the fiscal management of monies that the town has available to them because of taxpayer money, which brings a lot of transparency to your public, okay? Because if you're telling me that a one-year, five-year, if you have five-year staff, um, they would be eligible to 65 days, you could calculate that at each person's rate. You know, if they got paid $10, you know, an hour and it's 65, it'd be $650 per person. Okay, or whatever, multiply that by, you know, all that mathematical stuff. Um, so again, keep that in mind. So again, the, the transition would be minimal, 'cause this is already set on an anniversary date, which is the, the biggest perk. Okay, the hardest legwork was done when we, when the town set the policy on, um, on anniversary date and not calendar year. Okay, so very minimal transition regarding that. Uh, Mayor, I'll leave it to you for your, um, numbers.
Alright, so some of the things we wanted to point out, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, and, you know, because of the fact that this is an open meeting, you know, we don't wanna provide and share, uh, unintentionally any employee or personal information. But one of the things that I do have record for, that we put together, guys, is in 2018, we couldn't do crossover years, you know, budget cycles, but we did look at the, the, the annual, uh, amount in total. And keep in mind, like we say, you know, a lot of time, you know, we're paying employees not to work. Um, so you have to look at that on an administrative level. For us, that we're having to police, make sure we're gathering documentation and whatnot. But in 2018, we paid out over $15,319 in sick leave, okay? A majority of all the employees utilized and pretty much finished up all their vacation dates. That's something that we never have really an issue with, you know, aside from some other department, uh, department heads. But we paid out over $15,000. In 2019, half the year, remember, we got strict, and we were going from, uh, you know, when I took over, um, in January, or the end of January, and as we were, you know, looking and delving deeper into the rabbit hole, as I would like to say, you know, involving some of the issues and items here at town, uh, but we ended up paying $10,000. Then we got real strict, uh, in the fall, in October, when I was seeing personally, um, you know, or seeing how sick leave can be taken advantage of. Um, it's not something, you know, they normally dip into, but if you give an individual three options of time off to dip into, most of the time, you know, we were seeing, uh, sick leave being utilized and vacation not being touched, until closer towards their anniversary date, when they wanted to use it all up, before they lost it. Now, in total, uh, for 2019, we paid out, let me get that real quick, we have them separate. Okay, yeah, the 2019 was the $10,000. Now, so far, at the start of this year, that we got real strict with, uh, the one-day request for the time off for water and sewer, we've only paid out $1,800. And for the general fund aspect on the administrated, administration, we've only paid out $883. That is a significant difference, ladies and gentlemen, once we start requiring doctor's notes on days, on day one. So part of the reason why I wanted to present this, uh, to you guys is because of the fact that, you know, not everybody utilizes all the sick leave. It's something that sometimes goes unused, um, and at most of the time that we've seen, you know, going back in 2018, you know, something that we normally really don't budget for, we're paying a lot out. Um, and the way that I would see it is, it's a lot of work administratively on our end, trying to police that, trying to keep up with everything. And because of the fact that, you know, we don't want to, uh, call out, you know, uh, certain individuals or certain things that we're seeing, one of the things that we have been establishing is a pattern. Every single month, we are seeing anywhere from certain, uh, individuals or, or, or employees that are utilizing eight to 16 hours a month. You can pretty much pinpoint it on a calendar date, um, each and every month that they're utilizing sick leave. Now, which and what way they're utilizing it, you know, uh, pretty much, at that point, you know, that's something that we're not gonna want to cause or create any issues with. But we see it, uh, for the fact that it's something that is costing us in the long run, and it's being a card administratively to police. And the reason why I wanna move forward with changing up to PTO is a few things. When we established the, uh, annual vacation leave, we were already in previous meetings and discussions that we had with our HR department before, and, you know, this is not the first time they presented this, um, is the fact that we are very generous in what we do as a municipality. An individual working his first year gets 12 days, that's two weeks and two extra days during our Monday through Friday. And that is a lot, and I'm not saying, you know, they don't deserve it and it's not earned. But what, as a municipality, us being a, a small town, what can we realistically afford? You know, we have been making moves and doing things administratively to set aside money for capital improvements, set aside money for capital improvements for water and sewer, and ultimately, always addressing and taking care of our infrastructure. I believe in time, as the budget continues to balance out and get better, and our funding increases with general revenue, sales tax, and everything that continues to come in, this is something that we can, you know, bring up again later on in the future. Uh, but at this moment in time, it is becoming an ongoing issue. So you guys that aren't there on the day-to-day don't really see the patterns and stuff that we see, you know, as part of the administration and things that I talk about with HR. But ultimately, you know, when it comes down to why we're presenting, changing everything to PTO, and doing away with a sick leave, is purely based on the, uh, financial aspect, and also too, the, uh, overall fiscal responsibility and administrative management aspect here at the town. Um, I'm gonna open it up to questions from council, from anybody else, uh, that is wanting to, to comment or, uh, add to the discussion. But we are looking at mirroring what other municipalities are doing, other corporate businesses. There's a lot of things that individuals or, or that companies aren't doing anymore because of the fact that either it's been costly in the long run, it's opened up to long-term issues, and ultimately, you know, we have to be fiscally responsible, um, as an administration, and I'm bringing this to council for you guys, um, you know, to make that, that final decision. Now, before I open up the table, I'm, I'm gonna, my last comment here, um, and I'm glad, you know, uh, our department head stayed along. We've had some discussions, uh, over this, and I've met, you know, with over our, our financial department. I've talked to our department head, I've talked to HR about this. Um, one of the things that I won't do here, and I will ask council not to do, is basically, uh, to play it in simple terms, I'm not gonna put our department heads on the spot, as they've been, you know, in previous years, to, to answer on whether or not, you know, they would support, uh, or go against this decision, mainly because we know we need to keep and save face with their, their employees, because they're the ones that are gonna have to look up and answer to them, you know, once these discussions and agenda items are done. So I would not ask any council member or myself to put them on the spot and ask them, you know, if they support or what they think, this strictly has to be administrative. So I'll open up the, the, uh, floor to any council, uh, if they'd like to make any comments, or if they have any questions.
Before, I just wanna make one final comment to, it's something that we didn't, uh, mention, is, um, keep in mind that Ms. Norma, um, and the town have outside, uh, third-party individuals like Aflac, Liberty, um, people that sell the supplemental insurances, okay? Um, that is something that is available, whether it be long-term disability, short-term disability, cancer, any accidental, um, dismemberment. Um, the town employees do have access to outside policies that will assist, um, should anything ever occur as far as, you know, a, a illness or what have you. There, there is availability, and there are other avenues employees can take advantage of. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Cindy. Um, opening up for, uh, comments, Norma, do you have anybody raising their hand or anything like that?
No, sir.
Eddie raises his hand.
Okay.
Eddie.
Yeah. You, um, Cindy mentioned that the 20, the, uh, sick leave rolls over to the next year? That it keeps, that it keeps, uh, rolling over?
Accruing, yes.
And the handbook I'm seeing here, it says paid sick leave, maybe accrue, accrue it, whatever, for a total not more than 240 hours.
Right, so let's say, so what I'm trying to tell you is that at any given point in time that the employee, um, you can accrue up to a max of 240 hours, okay? So let's say, for example, I don't use any sick leave, and I have 240 hours on the very last day of my anniversary date. I can take those 240 hours with me on my next anniversary year, I don't start off at zero. I can, I just won't ma, I won't go above that. So the next time I take, I need two days off, and I take two days off and use it off of sick leave, those 240 will now be 224, right? Because I've had 16 hours that I removed. And then I have an opportunity every pay period to accrue the 3.7, which is an ongoing thing. Um, you know, it's just, it's always up there.
And, and just for clarification purposes, because, you know, at times when we talk 240 hours, not everybody follows along, guys, this is 30 days off, 30 days paid time off that they can go up to.
Okay. Um, and then another thing, the, uh, touching based on what Mr. Garcia was asking. If, if somebody had, going to a PTO, if somebody goes, uh, has surgery, uh, even the person that has the, the most hours, which would be 200, I mean, I'm sorry, 24 days, that's not gonna be enough for recovery. How, how, and if we were to go into this, how are we, uh, how would we be able to accommodate these people?
So let me, let me touch in on that real quick, Cindy, also, and then I'll let you, um, so if you look at the way the question is being generated, it's morally, it's, it's an honest question, Mr. Chavez, to ask. But once again, if you look at the mindset, we're looking at how more can we help out an employee, you know, if they get sick, if they're injured and whatnot? But in reality, Mr. Chavez, is if you look at it on administrative level, while that individual is out... But in reality, Mr. Chavez, is if you look at it on administrative level, while that individual is out. We can't hire, we can't bring nobody in, we're stuck with limited staff for a certain period of time. They can take advantage of their vacation and utilize it while they're off. But the town is fitting the bill for the rest of the duration of the time that they're off. And in reality, nowadays, the common practice and the way it should be utilized is the employees have the opportunity. To purchase supplemental insurance that can take them and cover them for those types of situations. What we have going on right now by utilizing the sick leave like this is the fact that we have individuals that are. Constantly using it and in the long run, ends up increasing our cost as a whole. Uh as a municipality, when we're when we're getting a lot of claims on insurance and whatnot. And the way we should be proactive in looking at it is individuals that are utilizing their supplemental insurance to cover it. If they're frequently using it and having issues and constant issues, the the overall increases is not shared by everybody. Think about individuals that don't use a sick leave, that don't have injuries, that don't have uh those problems or anything like that that can happen. They're not having to carry the increased burden of covering those costs. Those issues are get put directly. And reflect on the individual's personal uh uh account. Or liability or insurance coverage that they have, and it's not something that's put on to anybody else. And in the long term, the way I look at it by doing so, um would put a little bit more personal responsibility and accountability on the employee. And and makes them be a little bit more proactive in in their safety and 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 overall, you know, trying to be accident free at work. But go ahead, Cindy.
So one of the additional perks, and just to kind of piggyback, yes, there are those supplemental insurances, right? And then, of course, um. You have to keep in mind that the town isn't completely living, leaving them out into the abyss as far as any type of injury, okay? Now, if it's a work-related injury, the town offers a worker comp, right? There there's a plan in place. Should the employee. Get injured at work on the eighth day of of loss of work, that particular worker comp insurance will pick up that. And then the employee will get a percentage based on the injury or however they calculate it through TML IRP. Um they'll they'll receive compensation for that time if it's a work-related injury. So it's not like we're saying, you know, you're not gonna have any type of coverage now. You know, we have to keep in mind too, let's not forget that at the end of the day, all of these costs and all of these perks, it's not just solely a a sick leave. It's not just the annual leave. Don't forget, you know, you still have your your performance evaluations that are at times compensated related. And you also have your health insurance benefits that are provided to them at a hundred percent, you know, or X amount of employer contribution that goes towards their individualized. Medical plan. Um but again, there are options for them that, um if I understand correctly. Uh Ms. Norma might chime in with a little bit with me. I don't deal with those outside entities as much, Aflac and things of that nature, but. I'm pretty uh under the understanding that they are extremely affordable. Um it's not, it's nothing compared to what your. Um health plan would be like. It's not a seven hundred dollar a month bill. It's extremely affordable and and. Their turnaround rate and compensating due to an injury is uh rather rapid. Um they do receive compensation for that rather quickly now. Again, just keep in mind, we're not leaving leaving them out there in the cold. Should they have a work-related injury for re- reiteration purposes, they are completely covered through worker comp.
Exactly. Any other questions, Mr. Garcia?
No, you kind of answered all my, but I wasn't thinking of of just uh individuals that that abuse the system. I was thinking of. Things that do occur in in life, uh and not just to those that abuse it, but to 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 other people that uh. Might have cancer or lung, uh that's what I'm thinking of. Uh those are the people that I'm worried about that uh wanna make sure that. But then again, if we go with Aflac, I mean, we can get that extra insurance or.
Well, and they have cancer plans now, uh Councilman Chavez. And another thing I did leave out was um. FMLA, right? If someone gets sick, um the town currently has their FMLA policy in place. Should someone be meet the eligibility requirements of the Family Medical Leave Act, by all means, they have that protection for a year, right? I mean, for X amount of days, um four hundred eighty hours, I believe it is. Okay, um so needless to say, they have that also that protects their job. Okay, um no one's gonna fire them, no one's gonna terminate them, separate their employment. Um they have that protected uh job post and wage. Upon their return. Okay, the other thing is, is I wanna reiterate on the worker comp. Um it's the first seven days are not paid. Okay, it's on the eighth day loss of work that the worker comp kicks in. Okay?
That and that's something we want everybody to be, you know, aware of, you know. As times change, you know, there's a lot of stuff that comes in to be more cost effective, to help pull on what's being pulled out of our plates. And 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 be able to give the employee options um in order to provide either the means for their healthcare, for their insurance. For covering in case, you know, accidents of, you know, that nature kind of happened. Um it's not something that is always the sole or or the town's sole responsibility. Um and that's one of the things that we wanted to point out to you guys, you know. The the where they have workman's comp, all that stuff still looks out and everything, you know, in in their best interest, of course. But when we're looking administratively and financially, I look at the sick leave a- as something that we've been looking at. For a long time as being very problematic. Um we don't wanna be policing, you know, we feel. You know, that we need to put the responsibility on the employees to to manage and handle their time off. And also, you know, take a little bit more serious con- consideration, you know, uh on prioritizing their time and things like that, you know, we see. We see times and time and time again where we have, you know, for example, staff uh or not even staff, but I'll I'll tell you about situations where. You know, we schedule time off for them throughout the week. On those days off, you know, there's plenty of time for me even personally at my job, that I take care of some of those things that I have to handle on my days off. And time and time again, you know, we we see those days being taken during regular work hours. We have show and staff, we have. We end up having to do extra work and trying to cover the work that is needing to be done at town. Um so I think by moving forward with the PTO, it helps us, you know, save more a little bit in the long run financially. That we normally don't budget for, but it also helps clean us, clean up what we do administratively. On the accountability, the policing and everything like that. So, you know, ultimately, this is strictly and pure. Uh administrative on the focus and purpose for this. Um and when we look in time and time again, you know, the history. You know, i- it's only certain individuals that utilize it. We have others that don't even use it, you know, at all. And I figure, why not turn this around and be a little bit more productive with it? Give it as an extra vacation day for those above the year, uh above the uh the five years. Give them two extra vacation days and let it be done with, you know, we still follow all the policies and procedures in regards to. Asking for time off if they're utilizing it like that and and, you know, let it be, let it be done with that, you know? Um any comments? Cindy, anything else that you'd like to add?
Uh well, I have a comment. So you're basically scrapping the sick leave for individuals, correct?
Correct.
So no more, basically no more sick leave, Ben. So if I had a hernia working, let's say, not not work related at home. And I've had a hernia and that's, I've been off for two and a half weeks, maybe even longer sometimes because the one I had was pretty serious. So the rest of the time that I'm off, if I don't cover thirteen days, then I have to cover the rest myself. We. Uh basically out with no pay, correct?
No, that's like why we said, you know, there's supplemental insurance, insurances and stuff like that that can cover those.
Yeah, I I I I've I've summed up for those and they're basically not the same, Ben. They're they're they're, they don't work like they say they work, cuz I've. I've gotten a few myself and they're not that that, they're not that good, actually, to tell you the truth. They are not. So I know that. Now, you were talking about leasing staff, uh. I mean, that's a problem, then we should address those and talk to those individuals and and inform them of what they're doing. I mean, that that'd be the best way to take care of that because that's, I've seen that before, I mean, uh everywhere. You see that everywhere. I mean, I worked for the state for twenty-two years. I used to see that all the time and they would address those issues, talk to the staff and then correct them.
Working for the city, Mr. Alfaro, do you currently have sick leave offered through them?
Yes.
How many hours do they?
Well, actually, I always still work for the state, remember? I retired from the state. I long now work at a at a at a clinical facility now. So and they do offer those two weeks, which is standard usually in most places. Uh so and they do offer sick leave. For all of us, you know, and I don't know, this this is a big change, especially getting rid of sick leave for some people that. You know, may need it and they're gonna have to, like I said, fork out the money to pay for that, Ben. I mean, I I can also see that in two thousand twenty, you're saying that the. The cost is down dramatically down and that's really good. I saw, that's excellent. So we follow that same trend and we shouldn't be paying that much out this year, cuz you've done a great job of doing that, so that's that's my take on this.
So what are some of the operating budgets, uh Mr. Alfaro, for some of these organizations that offer both?
Well, the facility that I work in is huge compared to the town, of course. You know, you can't, you're comparing apples and oranges here. But still, even when this municipality doesn't have a lot of staff, uh uh you're just taking it away.
Don't have a lot of staff hurts us in the long run as well. And just like you said, Mr. Alfaro. We're comparing apples to oranges, but we're expecting apples and apples, you know, we're we're a smaller municipality, smaller funding. At times, realistic, and that's part of the thing that we saw with the collective bargaining with the amount of officers that we have, you know. That's, you know, and not to throw the police into it, but that's always the art. Police, why can't we pay, you know, what they pay sheriffs? Why can't we pay what they pay the city of El Paso? And unfortunately, we don't have the operating budgets. It is what it is. And I think us being realistic that we're a small municipality and a town, we need to be realistic at the fact that, you know. We can't offer and be competitive in offering some of the perks that some of these, you know, larger organizations with more money have to offer. Now, for an example, I'll let you guys know, you know, I previously worked at a pet hospital, Banfield Pet Hospital. Worldwide corporate, they they're part of the M and M's company. They own all the hospitals, they, you know. Do Buku deals in 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 buying bulk medications and stuff like that. And they're a heavier competition for a lot of the local vet clinics and stuff. And even with them, a multimillion dollar corporation, I had no such thing as sick leave. We had PTO. A lot of the major corporations are doing it because they don't want that HR headache of policing and maintaining people's sick hours, this and that. They just give you a solid flat. These are the days you have off, you manage it. You know what I mean?
Right. That the the main concern here for me is that we need to remember that. Things don't get done through any other source other than people. And we offer just a little Benny. I mean, even this is. Uh as far as what they have right now, it's pretty good. I mean, you know, we're we're not paying people high tar- high dollar here, you know? So that's where we make the savings. I mean, you can't compare the salaries in Anthony as to say El Paso, for example, that's a big, big gap there.
You expect us to give the same type of benefits?
Well, these benefits aren't aren't really a lot. I mean, what do we currently have? I mean, I don't know. That's all I can say that. PTO is great if you could offer probably some more days for them for the sick leave.
But that's what we're doing. We're adding an additional day.
Right, this is one day, you're talking about.
For for the one five-year employees.
Right, right.
Two more additional days. And remember, Mr. Alfaro, these are business days, so even the first year employee is already getting two weeks off. And two additional in the next work week. That that's time off. I mean, I had a knee surgery done. I had complications and stuff. I was still back at work within the week. With technology, with health coverage and stuff nowadays, individuals for certain types of surgeries like that are already back to work within two weeks. Statistically.
Well, I I if I would like to see how we can work this a little, tweak it a little better than it is now, that's all I can tell you. Cuz right right now, I I don't see it, you know? I really don't.
Cindy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, you know, and and just, again, the standard is obviously in the eye of the beholder and the entity, right? But a generalized standard for sick leave right now is is typically a week, okay? Um again, the state, as Mr. Alfaro himself stated, and just to reiterate, the state doesn't compare to the town, right? The the it's apples to oranges, correct? The money, the financial aspect of it is completely opposite ends. Okay, we do need to, you know, always mainstream and make sure that we understand that the purpose of this is really truly to provide the employee an option. Accountability, to become responsible, to be able to have the choice to delegate how they wanna use that particular PTO. Without having to answer to anyone other than the fact that they have to follow policy when requesting the information, really truly. Um and again, I I do want, you you can see the significant change in the. Um monetary amounts from twenty eighteen to now and and, but with that being said, it's been a lot of policing. Okay, it's taken away time from the day to day. Okay, time that it's taken to look into. You know, has this person provided it, let's, you know, let's check the validity of that particular doctor's note. That takes time away from the regular eight to five. Okay, on top of what everything else that these department heads are having to do, things of that nature. Okay, and it has been very tedious. In having to keep that, okay? Um so just keep that in mind. I mean, the numbers are really good, yes, and and high five to that. But it has been at at the reduction of your work productivity on the day to day because you're having to police that.
Yeah. And like I said, you know, for the town starting off for a small municipality, you know. Twelve days, start off on your first year is really good, guys. I mean, it really is. And unfortunately, like I said, I can't. Disclose and share the information publicly, you know, what I have before me. But when I look at a rundown of all the staff, in reality. Three to four are the ones that regularly are utilizing um the sick leave, you know? Everybody else, there's a couple hours here and there, six to eight or whatever, and when I look at it. If that's the case and we're being fair all the way across the board, why not give them the extra day? And for the ones that have been here, you know, five and above the additional two days. I mean, it still is beneficial and it is generous what we currently are offering, guys. Remember, this town. During the economic hardship that we saw years ago, the town, as far as the employees. Had the sick leave, I think it was like four eighty, right, Cindy? For the regular employees at one time, we dropped. Forty, that's two months off that we were paying employees. On top of that, we used to cover one hundred percent healthcare coverage and half of dependent healthcare coverage. For a small municipality, ladies and gentlemen, you tell me, when no roads, when nothing was getting fixed. Who were the ones walking out like kings out of here? You know, what was the thing? Wh- who, where was the benefit? How were the scales tipped? And we're not trying to call out anything and say that these employees don't deserve it. Over all the years since we've been in this administration, we have constantly given raises across the board. We recently changed to merit-based increases, okay? But they've been getting all over the, you know, they've been getting them throughout the the entire, you know, uh the last few years, you know? That's something that needs, that people need to be aware of. Second is we have twelve going on to thirteen days now. We dropped it down to six hundred and forty. Back then, it was two months' time that they had off, that supplemental insurances and things of that nature can cover now, you know? Um I see some of the comments, you know, on the Facebook, you know, about Blue Lives Matter and all this and that, and. We're not trying to make it political, we're just looking at it administratively. Not a lot of individuals utilize that time. You know, we do have some that, you know, I mean, Cindy, if you wanna jump in or not, but you know, ultimately, it's just accountability. And responsibility on the employee's behalf. We can't always solve all the problems and take care of everything for them, you know?
Mayor, we have, uh Mayor Polk have a week uh with a question and Mr. Councilman Chavez.
Go ahead, John. I'll wait till you all are.
Well, I don't have a question, I have a statement. This is the third time that we brought this up. It seems like we kind of bring it up every three years because we know it's an issue. And uh I I think the problem is, is it was already set up. So it's easy for us as council to just kind of push aside the fact that, well, they're already getting this, why change it? And I look at it from the fact of, so let's say, all all of us, the council and mayor, we're starting a town. And we're responsible for the coffers, which is the taxes of all of our people. And we have responsibility to them financially to make good decisions. So would we come right out and give a brand new employee that's been here a year? Twelve days of vacation and twelve days of sick in after their first year. When all other businesses give a week, which is five days or seven days, and maybe they give another week a sick. So, you know, people, every time we turn around. Uh why is, why is this street not getting fixed? Why is the water? Why why has the pipes not been done? Well, because we didn't get to start from scratch, we've been digging out of the hole forever, you know, uh. Uh past administrations had to lie and say that the baseball. Baseball Field Lights was a grant that didn't get paid for, and then five years later, we get stuck with the bill. Uh, they, they do water loans. And for the first five years, we don't pay anything. And now we're paying staggered eighty thousand, the next five years a hundred and twenty, the next five years a hundred and forty, the next five years a hundred and eighty. Because everybody always wants to push off. And not think about it from the standpoint of the responsibility of the taxpayers' money. So, we got to get past the point of, do they deserve it? Because that's not it. We got to get into the mindset of a business owner. And because we're the board, we're responsible for the business of the town and for the finances of the town. And we have to say, how do we compare to others? And is what we are already offering feasible? So if we have thirty-some employees. And every, and once, and let's just say one year, everybody got fricking COVID like that's going on right now. And we're at thirty percent staff. And we're paying out for people for four to six weeks of sick time. And then they can take their personal time on top of that. What would happen to the town of Anthony? The answer is we'd go bankrupt. So we feasibly can't afford the system that we have in place that we're fighting. But like I said, you know, six years ago, we brought this up before I was on council. And then it got brought up about three years ago. And it kind of got brought up when we did the HR manuals five years ago. And then it got brought up three years ago again. But we just don't really want to take on this and look at it from the standpoint of. What is best for the town of Anthony? We could say our monies are in a better situation than they were. That could be our excuse. But we, we could also say they could be in a much better place than they are. Um. The mindset used to always be, the insurance went up and we just kept paying it. And then finally we said, why do we continue to pay it when hardly any other businesses pay a hundred percent of the healthcare insurance for people? Um, we offer these other supplemental insurances, but nobody takes advantage of them. Well, you know why? Cause they don't have to. Why, why do you have to take advantage of, uh, uh, supplemental insurance when we have a pretty rich? Package that we, we deliver to people after one year. You know, after three, it, an employee after three years has built up their bank. To where they can have six weeks of sick and accumulate more during that year as they use it. And still have twelve days off for vacation. And can we afford that? And that's what we have to think about.
And you know what? I'd like to add on to what Sean says and whether it turns political or not, and you know, it gets controversial, you know, but some of us have to say it. Is the fact that, you know, a lot of the times. We come at is, and we, the reason why we put this on the agenda is because it needs to be looked at. We need to address the situation. And at times, you know, even with the certain changes in administration, I feel and I'll say it, is that there's. A bias that comes from some of the members here in council. That should be making the decision financially to move forward and get the town set up to where we need to be. But we don't because either we have a spouse, family members, relatives that work here for the town. And you don't want to make that tough decision because of the fact that it's personally going to affect them, which ideally, you know. I- is the wrong way of approaching that situation and should not be the way you should make a deci- a decision, you know? Um, Mr. Almeida.
I know Eddie wants to say, I promise Eddie I'll make this quick. I promise. Don't forget what you're gonna say. Um, so one of the things that, that you also kind of, um, reiterating and piggyback what Sean is saying is. You need to ask yourselves, okay, what is it that we want? What is, what is our goal? What is the desire of, of the council of the town? You know, do we want to get employees back to work quicker or do we want to leave them at home? Expending the sick leave they have available, right? Do we want to have people, you know, be out of. Out on leave a lot longer or maybe improve a return back to work or return to work program where you're motivating employees to get back to work? Right? Um, because let's be honest, there's been instances, um, particular cases in this particular entity. Where individuals have waited till they've completely exhausted the entire sick leave bank. Why? Because they can't. Right? And they could have come back to work. Um, at any given point in time throughout that time. Um, so again, you know, what is, what is the town council's desire? Is it to. Afford people an opportunity or a window of opportunity to stay out of work longer? Or do we create something that will maintain employees at work, which is what I would hope you all want, right? Keeping people at their post, at bay, performing their duties and responsibilities as expected when they first came on board with the town. So that is something that, that might be of, of a thought, you know, food for thought. Sorry, Councilman Travis.
Go ahead, Eddie.
All right, uh, um, two things, Ben. First, what you were saying about our spouses and that has nothing to do with, because I voted a lot of times against, against the stuff that. I should have voted for her and I didn't. This thing, my issue is if somebody's out, um, if they get hurt, for instance. If they get hurt on the way to work. Okay? They get hurt, they go to hospital, they get doctors, they come back to work before they're even, uh, better. They might have bad problems, they have whatever the situation is. Are we gonna, are we gonna be able to, to afford them getting hurt at work? And then be off more time? Because we had, we had one lady, we had one young lady that was not a full-timer. She was a part-timer or she was a full-timer, then they moved her down to a part-timer and then she got hurt on her way to work. And she was out for three months or however.
That's all. You can express yourself by all means. Just be very careful not to exceed. That's all. It's just a response. I'm not trying to stop you from speaking your mind. You can do that. That's not my role. But my role is to protect the town from an HR standpoint.
Yeah, yeah, but go ahead. You were gonna reply on?
Um, it, we have policies in place right now from an HR standpoint. Um, that analyze case by case depending on the employee. Um, and Norma and the team reach out regarding return to work practices. Okay, employees are required to bring particular justifications, documentation from their physicians. That, um, are analyzed and looked at prior to that. Now. I don't want to get into the intricacy of specific cases only because that isn't the time and place to do that and we're out of our element. Um, because of the nature of the particular meeting that we're in. Um, and because we're not really allowed to discuss employee information outside of, you know, the HR privacy part. Okay, but we do have, please, council members rest assured that we do have return to work policies in place. That look at that, um, very intricately. Because there are certain things that we do need to look at. We do recognize should an employee be hurt on personal time. We still, there's a lot, I can't, it's, it's. Plethora of different things we need to look at, that this is not the time or place to discuss.
My only question Cindy is on that one, like, you know, regardless, if they get injured outside of work. Should the town pay for it?
That's a personal injury. That's something that's, it, it, you know, if it's work related, then the town's worker comp comes in. If it's personal, that is something that we just leave as personal.
Does the sick leave cover that?
Right now, if the, if they bring in justification according to the policy that you have. If, as long as they bring in a doctor's note, whether it's from WellMed or from urgent care or med post or wherever it's from, yes.
There you go, guys. There you go.
So I, I think I still have the floor, right? Because if, if that is true, okay? They come back to work. I'm not saying that they, they get injured off of work, but they come back to work, okay? And they get re-injured, the same injury. Uh, what's gonna happen then?
Cindy.
Those, again, I, I can't give you a black and white answer, Eddie, because it's, what we call, you know, you've heard this, you've heard me say this before. I can't give you a cookie cutter answer. Um, because those are situations that the department head, there's an investigation that takes place regarding the insurance. That is not a decision that HR nor council nor mayor nor department head makes. Okay, those things are looked at very specifically on a case by case situation. And we manage them whether it be through an insurance, an investigation. But I would not be able to provide you with a clear-cut answer, again, because it's very case by case. I do apologize that I can't give you that yes or no answer, um, because I, I'm just unable to do that for you at this time.
We have a, a hand raised by Mr. Weeks, Mr. Weeks.
Mayor, if I may interject before, uh, Councilor Weeks, um. Makes a statement and I apologize, Councilor Weeks, but, but yeah, let's just not get into any specific examples. And just like Cindy said, uh, you know, we can speak in general terms and we gotta, we gotta stay within the scope and confine of what the workshop is. So, so Council Chavez, I apologize for that, but if you want to delve into that a little bit further. That can be placed on the agenda as an executive session item and, and, and addressed at that point.
And then, just like we had put in the email, if anybody has any particular questions, y'all can reach out to me. I didn't get any calls this weekend, so I just want to put that on the record, you know? Uh, go ahead.
But Ben, I think this is the time that we're asking the questions because we're thinking about them and we're discussing them. Those questions are popping up in our mind. Given that right, that courtesy to express our, our opinion.
Uh, tha- that is understood, Joe, and that is noted, but the only thing is you need to understand because of the nature of this discussion. It involves personnel matters. We can't really openly go into. Personnel, uh, specific personnel, uh, situations and stuff, which we knew it's gonna go there. That's why we're saying.
I understand that, but you also opened up the kettle of worms when, when you disclosed the wives.
Stating a fact, Mr. Chavez, I mean, uh, Mr. Garcia about, you know, what potential motives can be behind a decision. Is just clear and for the record and it is not, uh, I'm not saying anything false. That is a true fact. It's a true statement. Does anybody have the floor, anything else on, on this item that, you know, uh, we can bring up? Because I think strongly from what the discussions have, have taken place. Um, there is more evidence and factual relative, uh, discussion taking place. Uh, that supports, you know, administratively moving forward with doing away with the sick leave. Giving the additional day and two days based on tenure, uh, and changing it to, uh, PTO. Than what I have heard, uh, anything in regards to keeping it, keeping it as it is.
Mayor, I have Mayor Potem Weeks and Councilman Alfaro with their raise, with their hand raise.
Go ahead, Mr. Weeks.
I'll, I'll defer to, uh, uh, Councilman Alfaro. I'll speak after him.
Yes, I'd like to comment that, uh, Mr. Weeks had some excellent points in regards to what we're making this change. And also I'd like to add to that is that the way it works now, we go to PTO. It does relieve the burden to administration. It's also plus, and I think also to the employees having to be. Watch whenever they submit anything. So that's an advantage. I mean, when I talk, guys, I'm talking, I'm saying questions out there. I'm asking questions because maybe some other councilmen might have the same question I have. But in the long run, uh, this is an advantage for the employees as well as the town. So that was my take on that. That's, that's all I just got, that's all I had to say.
Go ahead, Mr. Weeks.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna try to word this right, Henry. Um, and council. But what just happened was a perfect example. Of the concern with relatives, family, friends, spouses, whatever. And our, our duties as a council person. And all I'm gonna say in justifying this is. What Councilman Chavez brought up, he only knew about. Because his spouse is on the, it works for the town. He, other council, I don't know what he's referring to. Because I'm a council member without family and close friends and, and whatever. On that work for the town of Anthony. So when you say that you're making your decisions without thinking of other people. But you use your justification of using something of information you only got from somebody else. That, that kind of shows the whole point. How can you, we, we've, we've been through the years of, well, this would affect my relatives' water bill. This would affect this, you know, we, we've, we've heard this numerous times. But if our argument's gonna be because of secondhand knowledge that we shouldn't even have as council people. We, we, we kind, I, I'm just saying, we kind of just justified the whole point. You know, one of the things that I really, I think was a big change. From the previous administration, I'm gonna talk five, six, seven years ago. And now was, there was a lot of business owner, landowner, family, this and that. And every decision and everything you could trace back benefited people. And, and I think that's where it's been a lot easier for me. You know, at first it was hard as the outsider being here, but it's always been easier for me because the decisions I'm making. Aren't worried about my high school friend or my parents or my uncles or my kids. They're, you know, they're about the town. And that's, I just wanted to point that out because when we went that way, it just pointed the fact.
Exactly. And, and a lot of the items, and this is exactly what some of the challenges that I face. You know, being the mayor and the administrator here is, you know, chain of command, following information. I mean, you know, it got very scary on some of the personal information that was almost being leaked out into a public forum. By a council member who ideally should not be privy to any of the information. Unless you're getting it from a personal source, because personally, in regards to some of those items. I have not discussed or talked about any of those items when it, any of the council members. And it's very interesting to, to see the information that gets popped up and brought up. Without even going to me and ideally, you know, being respectful to the roles. Um, that you have here within the, uh, with, as, as part of the administration, aren't even followed. Um, and you know, very well, Mr. Weeks, I'm glad, you know, you pointed that thing out. I think, uh, let's go ahead and move back over and like, uh, Mr. Alfaro had stated. You know, this is about PTO, guys. This is, you know, giving an extra vacation day, no vacation days taken away. You know, they're getting an additional day for the ones over five years. We're giving them two additional days. Um, we're making it easier, you know, to pu- to maintain, you know, the time off request. We're giving and putting the responsibility in the employer, giving them a little bit more freedom in how they manage that time off. Um, and also being fiscally responsible in how much we pay out, you know, and have previously paid out for sick leave. But it's all, that is all this item and the agenda item is really for. So, you know, considering it's a workshop, I wanted this as a workshop so we can engage in meaningful discussion. Bring out all the points because truth be told, ladies and gentlemen, this is gonna be on the next agenda item. So, at this point in time, what are your final thoughts in regards to doing away with the sick leave? Giving the additional day off with the paid time off and the additional two days off for those above five years. And switching it from vacation time, sick leave, and just calling it paid time off.
Mayor, if I could say something, Mayor, if we could just try to stick within the scope of what the workshop says. The notice on the workshop, which is updating annual leave and sick leave for the town of Anthony. Uh, Texas Employee Handbook to Pay Time Off, PTO. Uh, if we can try and keep it to within the scope of that and not get into other issues. Uh, you know, they're not within that umbrella.
That's interesting. That's why I was bringing it back up to the table and just say, you know, what are the final thoughts on that PTO and, and, and the sick leave? So, does any council, anybody have any final thoughts, any comments?
I have Councilman Chavez at raising time.
Mr. Chavez.
Okay, just to clarify, Sean, I didn't get the information from what, from the person that you're telling me. I got it from two other individuals in the town. One of them that's very close to where, okay. But anyway, I don't, uh, I don't, I still don't understand how we're gonna do this. Because if they get re-injured, that, that same injury from the, how are we gonna?
But give me, Councilman Chavez, again, just to kind of reiterate and just to kind of help, um, get things back on track. Okay, we don't want to beat this dead horse a hundred times. Um, anytime that occurs, please rest assured that you're, that we as an HR department or your HR consultant. Is always in communication with those involved in that process. And we will assure you that whatever measures need to be taken as far as investigation, providing information to insurance carriers. Whatever the case may, may be, please rest assured that your HR department consultant is assisting and ins- Whatever the case may, may be, please rest assured that your HR department consultant is assisting and ensuring that those processes get done correctly. Okay, and, and, and know that we cannot divulge specific, um, and again, just again, beating the dead horse one more time. We can't, um, give you a cookie cutter answer, I apologize for that. Um, that's, that's, that, that's all I can really tell you right now because it is very limited to case by case. But regarding the PTO, um, you know, just keep this in mind as, as a final thought. You know, do you wanna have people at work, um, quicker, you know, consi- you know, consistently? Um, doing what they're supposed to be doing, and i- if that's the desire of, of the town council to do so, then, you know, consider the PTO. Um, as something that will benefit both employees and the employer, which in this case would be the town. As Louis stated, you know, it does have benefits, it, it's, you know, it gives the employee a hundred percent discretion. They can choose how they wanna handle that, how they wanna expend that exhaust, that particular leave, which is what they should be, rather than having. Administration always asking them, did you bring your doctor's note? You know, what are you gonna do? Why are you gonna be absent? You know, can you, you. We'll eliminate all of that policing and allow adults to be adults. Okay, adults to be adults and have that delegated discretion.
Mayor and, and council, if I may interject here something. Um, Counselor Chavez, you can always, I mean, visit with Cindy and, and the mayor on those issues. If it deals with facts and circumstances of a particular instance, you know, that can be done internally. So, uh, you know, as long as obviously there's no forum issues, you know, if it's just you, the mayor and Cindy, I'm sure that they. The mayor and Cindy will accommodate you and address maybe a more fact-specific or fact-intensive question that you might have. Uh, but, uh, right now, on the, in this workshop, uh, you know, I think that would, we're extending beyond the scope of the workshop, so. I'm just throwing that out there as a possibility, Mayor, if you wanna add to that, Cindy.
Yes, of course, and I'm, we're always, I, I'm more than willing to, to speak to any council member regarding certain policies that are in place individually with the mayor. Um, if the mayor allows that, again, just note, I do wanna make it known. I will not divulge anything that will violate any type of privacy law.
A- and, and that's all we want you guys to understand, that's why, like I said, you know, we can't get into the, 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 the details of some of this stuff. But just know for us as the administration, as HR, we see this thing as something that's needing to be done in the town. Because we deal with the day to day, we deal with all these aspects, and if anybody is ever wanting to know and find out anything else. My door is always open, my phone line's there, I reach out to you guys regularly, y'all could reach out to me as well. Anything else, uh, Mister Weeks had his, uh, his, um, hand raised, Sean?
Yeah, I think the last thing I would say is, this is something that, um, because we're a small town. Um, we, we have to take on the responsibility and due diligence of checking as our, on, on our own. You know, if we were a council in El Paso, we have a staff, and we have assistants. And we can say, hey, call these places and call these places and call these places and find out what they do and get me the information so I can make an informed decision. That's not how it works for us, you know, um, Norma and them can do some decision making, but I'll give you an example. When it came to the police first, uh, uh, deal, we called around. Uh, we asked other police, you know, we Google stuff, you find out what Texas law requires, you, you find out things. So then, what happens after we do the police, then the water sewer guys come to us and they say, well, we don't have a pay scale, what do we do? So I'm calling, I'm looking at the ten small five thousand, you know, three thousand to five thousand, close to us. Uh, areas, they're not a lot, but then you dig out to other areas, what do you guys do? What are your pay scales? What are this? What happened after that? Then the, the staff, the, at, the ladies and, and the staff and the clerks, they wanted a pay scale. So these things aren't just things that I came up with and, and drew, drew out. It, they, you know, chief can account, and then whatever and then they can know, and, and then, you know. They, and, and Cindy remembers, they, they took weeks, you know? So if you have, if you, if you, if you think it's wrong and, and you wanna justify that it's wrong. Find out some examples, do your due diligence, call Van Horns and the other small communities in Texas. And ask what they do and, and come up, or, and, and this is how we learn too, and then we find out what others do, what others don't. And, and that, I'm just kind of bringing it out there because we have to make an informed decision, we can't just rely on, okay, Cindy, what do you think? Or, or Norma, what do you think? We have to do a little bit of work. That's how all this has happened.
A- and, you know, i- in final closing, guys, just remember, you know, me, uh. Being in my role in, in administration, you know, we look to the accountability with the residents, we look to the accountability with the vendors. We look to accountability with the business owners, you know, even accountability within ourselves and within our staff. We're asking for accountability with the residents, everything all the way across the board. I'm asking right now as administration that we set up accountability, you know, with this, it, it's a better process to follow. And my goal and job is to either, you know, increase productivity, make sure we get the infrastructure stuff in town. And set up all the policies and everything that we need to do and enforce them, so we can run our operations smoothly. That's it. And as the administrator, as the individual that's here involved with our department heads, looking at the day to day stuff that you guys aren't always involved in or. Really can be involved in, I'm telling you, this is the way, this is the route that we need to go. And it's gonna be beneficial in every aspect, for the employee, for the town, everything, that's it, bottom line. Um, anybody else have a closing statement? That way we can go ahead and wrap up this meeting. And, you know, like I said, me and Cindy are available for anybody wanting to individually call and ask about some of the situations or. Any questions that you might have in particular, but at this point, you know, I, I think we've said everything that's had to be said here. Um, and I wanna open up the floor for closing comment. Anybody? Norma, do you see anything? All right, uh, I think that wraps it, I think I'm gonna go ahead and put this on the, uh, next agenda. So we can, you know, take action on and go from there, but I wanna thank everybody. Everybody that's online, you know, we do see some questions and stuff that, you know, I'll either address personally. Or we'll put on the next agenda item to discuss, uh, in regular council meeting. But other than that, thank you, everybody, for, uh, following along, for tuning in and for engaging in these discussions, thank you.
Okay, y'all have a nice evening.
All right, later Cindy, bye Henry. Later Mister Chavez, Mister Garcia, normally everybody, have a good one.